This meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Van Vinkle, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Burns. Councilmember Radner.
Sure.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. We need a motion to, oh, first, please add item nine D two, a transit access grant to, to your agenda. And then we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a consent agenda. These are items that are approved without discussion. Any council member can ask to have an item dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A, schedule a public hearing for allocation of 2025 CDBG funds. B, payment of invoices from OHM advisors for the GIS app development for the total amount of $2,396.25. C, request authorization to bid the 2025 Event Hub construction project. Woo! D, request to approve payment application number five for the 2024 landscape maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amount of $5,280. E, request to approve payment application number five for the 2024 lawn maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amount of $25,968.20. F, payment request from Newman Smith Architecture for architectural services on the Event Hub and municipal services move. G, approval of payment application number four and change order number two for the 2023 sewer and catch basin cleaning and TV inspection project. M seven sixty in the amounts of $68,693.98 and a credit of $7,609.25, respectively. H, new and renewals of licenses for November fourth, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item six is recognition of visiting elected officials. I don't see anybody. Item seven, special recognition presentations and our city manager, Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I would like to take this opportunity to ask Director Steve Cooper to join me at the podium for a very, very special presentation.
Director Cooper, take it away, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. City Councilwoman Tungate, Attorney Cross, and Deputy City Manager Ben. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. As you know, K-9 Mace joined our department in 2017 and is set to retire right around April of 2025. He was the very first K-9 in the history of the department. He's been a wonderful addition to our team and he will be surely missed. As Mace's retirement date draws near, we will have a more formal acknowledgement and a send-off for him. We have in the back of the audi, in the back of council chambers, Mike Hotakowski, who is the K-9 officer for, for Mace. In preparation for Mace's retirement, we're here today to introduce our, our new K-9 officer and our new K-9. And I'll say a few words and then I'll have the K-9 Officer Kyle Lawless. If you come forward, stand front and center with the new K-9. I'll say a few words, introduce Officer Lawless, and then I'll have Officer Lawless come to the microphone and take over and introduce the newest addition to our department, our new K-9 officer, and let him give you some background on him as well as some of his capabilities. Also, Lieutenant Joe Meyer, who is sitting, standing in the corner of the council chamber, actually runs our, our K-9 program and has done so since, obviously, Mace has come aboard. He's done a really nice job, so want to acknowledge Lieutenant Joe Meyer, who's here as well. First, I'd be remiss, City Manager, if I didn't take a moment to thank you for your continuous support of our K-9 program. Prior to your tenure here with the city of Oak Park, we had never had a K-9 unit in the city. And that was one, I know, one of your desires to bring it here and you brought it to fruition and we are extremely happy. So we stand here today actually introducing our, our second K-9 unit. So we're very appreciative, appreciative of that. The K-9 unit is, you know, is an invaluable tool. Mace has been an invaluable tool for our department and has greatly assisted with crime reduction through suspect apprehension, article and evidence recovery, as well as narcotic detection. And not just only for the city of Oak Park, but Mace has traveled throughout the southeast region of Michigan on numerous requests from just a number of departments. And he has performed admirably and is actually, you know, one of the top K-9s, if not the top K-9 in the state here. So we're happy and proud of that. The K-9 unit also plays a major role in our community relation with our residents, many citizens who work and play and live in our great city. So we're happy to have this addition. One more special thank you to one of our wonderful residents, Mr. Ken Sherman. Mr. Sherman, you raise your hand, sir. Mr. Sherman seated in the back of council chambers. He's responsible for actually purchasing and donating the explosives training kit for our new K-9, which rings right in at the cost of about $4,000. Special. A special acknowledgement will be coming, a forthcoming for Mr. Sherman in the near future. But I wanted to, like I said, acknowledge that. Also, he was, Mr. Sherman was responsible for purchasing the bike training suit for Mace when Mace came aboard in 2017 as well. So Mace uses that as a piece of equipment that we use in the training of the K-9. And our new K-9 will also be able to make use of that. So we're just extremely grateful and appreciate your generosity. So thank you so much. Our new K-9 officer, like I said, Kyle Lawless is standing here before me. He's a five-year veteran of the Public Safety Department. He's a highly decorated officer with numerous awards and citations. Officer Lawless currently is a field training officer, an evidence technician, a firearms instructor, and now the department's second K-9 officer. Officer Lawless was selected for the position after a competitive process amongst several of the, his colleagues. And I could not be happier for him. And I'm extremely confident that he is going to do an outstanding job. So without further ado, I'll have Officer Lawless and new K-9 come to the microphone, let him make the formal introduction.
Thank you, Director Cooper. I just kind of want to piggyback, thanks, Ken. Without any of this equipment, the continued training that we do on a daily basis wouldn't be able to be done. So again, thank you on that. As Director said, he is our new K-9. His name is Vader. He is a sixteen-month-old Belgian Malinois. He's from the Czech Republic. We just finished our six-week training together last Friday. So we are on the road as of Wednesday was our first day together. He is extremely calm. I know you guys are looking at him right now and saying, wow, what a, what a, what a calm dog. I can tell he's getting a little anxious. He's, he got out of the car, he's looking for work. So as he is extremely calm, he definitely turns it on when work is needed. I mean, that's, that's pretty much it about him. The training was hard, it was down in Pennsylvania, but so rewarding. So rewarding seeing his growth through the six weeks and my growth, understanding him a little more. And, but again, there's still a lot more training to do with him. I look forward to serving the, the people of Oak Park and, you know, the surrounding cities as well. So again, thank you.
Now, Officer Lawless, I thi, so I'd like to ask council to come down for some pictures, if we could.
Of course, yeah. Right in front here.
Okay, yes. No, no petting yet, right?
Dog on duty.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, I also forgot to say what he's training. We, Director Cooper, we have touched on it. He is trained in explosive detection, so.
Oh, can we ask you to repeat that at the microphone? Because the folks at home can't hear and we want them to hear it.
I forgot to mention, Director Cooper may have touched on it. Vader is trained in explosive detection and patrol work. So he will, he'll alert on any explosives. And then the patrol aspect is building search, area search, tracking, obedience and aggression. So he's a, what they call in the business, a dual-purpose dog.
And then tell us about the name.
Vader? Well, I'll just state the obvious. I'm a, I'm a Star Wars fan and I wanted a, a powerful name.
Dog, Oak Park is going to the dogs. So Officer Lawless said he wanted a strong name and he's been a longtime Star Wars fan. So, welcome Vader. Item, let's see, seven B. We have a farmer's market presentation. Director Laurie Stasiak and Mary Lee Rosamond are going to present all of the various things that are happening in that market, past just selling corn.
Well, great, thank, thank you. You just said my introduction. But boy, that, that's a tough act to follow, isn't it?
Isn't it, yeah.
Boy, that's phenomenal. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager Tungate, administrative team. Tonight, we have our recreation coordinator, Mary Lee Rosman, and our recreation specialist, Erin Foley, here tonight to present to you a wrap-up of our farmer's market season.
Again, good evening. As Laurie had indicated, we are here to do a little wrap-up of the 2024 farm market season. But before we get onto that, just a real quick history of the market itself. The idea of hosting an Oak Park Farmer's Market began in 2017 and became reality in 2018. This was made possible through the development of our relationship with Laura Garmon, Market Development Advisor, Population Health Detroit for Humana Inc. The mission at that time was that the Oak Park Farmer's Market will provide a source for local, Michigan-grown produce and complementary products to be sold. It will provide a gathering place to engage in fresh food shopping, education, wellness and entertainment. While the market will enhance awareness of Oak Park and Humana at the time, the service provided will increase the health and well-being of residents in Oak Park and its surrounding communities. So you can see in 2018, we had ten vendors. As of 2024, we had four farms, fifteen added value vendors, and six in-kind vendors.
What is a value-added vendor and an in-kind vendor?
Value-added would be someone like your Shea Butters, your tea, the popcorn, anything of that nature that is not produce and/or food. Our bakery that was from Dakota Bakery would be considered an added value. In-kind would be the participation that we had from National Kidney Foundation, Michigan State Extension University, that provides education as well. Since 2018, Humana Inc. has been our sustaining sponsor. Over the past seven years, we have paid, have had ten supporting sponsors, totaling financial sponsorships of $19,200. 2024 supporting sponsors are bolded for you to see. Ascension Providence, Dedicated Senior Medical Services, Healthy Oakland Partnerships, Oakland University, Michigan Farm Market Association, and of course, Michigan State University Extension. Many of our programs are provided by our in-kind sponsors, to which we have had seven over the seven years. And as you can see by the bolded text, they have remained with us since 2018. The Oak Park Farmer's Market is proud to accept all forms of food assistance. These include SNAP, which is Supplemental Nutrition Program. We have Double Up Food Box that is run by the Fair Food Network. Michigan WIC Produce Connection that services our families that have WIC. Senior Project Fresh and Prescription for Health through the Oakland University. That's another program that we take here. So as you can see, we take any and all forms of food assistance. We have two very, very special events that we hold here in partnership with Healthy Oakland Partnerships. Family Market Day was held on July eighteenth of 2024. At that point in time, we also had an additional forty-by-forty tent where we housed fifteen additional resources for families. We had a petting farm, we had face painting, we always had music, we had the library. Food assistance given on that day. Produce WIC Connection, this is where the family's cards are loaded with special incentives to spend at the market. On that day, $1,459 were redeemed at that market from WIC. Healthy Oakland coupons, everyone that participated got a $5 coupon. They gave out $500 worth of additional produce coupons. Our SNAP and EBT count for the day was $360. Our Double Up Food Box that was given out was $320. Total for that day alone in food assistance was $2,639. Our Senior Market Day mimics the Family Market Day, except everything is more adult and senior-oriented. That was held on August eighth of 2024. Again, we had the tent with fifteen additional resources meant for our seniors, caregivers of seniors, and families. Healthy Oakland coupons, again, the $5 coupons. The most Oak Park has ever received, at $790, were redeemed on that day. SNAP and EBT benefits was 118, our Double Up Food Box was also 118, totaling $1,026 for Senior Market Day.
Some of the amenities that are offered at the market. We have cooking demonstrations pretty much weekly and those are mostly with Corwell Health. We offer music every single week with a different artist, a duo, a group. We also offer free yoga and stretch classes with one of our loved yoga instructors, Rachel Eckert. We also have a seating area to enjoy the market and hot foods and the music area. Hot foods are for sale from Top Dog Boom Foods with breakfast burritos and also coffee from Impel Java. We also have food safety education and that was with Oakland County Health Department as well as Michigan State University Extension. The Power Produce Program is something that we really love at the farmer's market. The Power Produce is a nutrition, education, interactive-based program for kids and for seniors. There is a booklet for you guys to look through that has all of the activities that the kids did throughout the summer. This is a six-week program that is themed every single year and this year is Growing and Eating the Rainbow. So each week included education on a different fruit or vegetable with an activity accompanying it. So for example, we had a Green Week, which 130 starter plants of herbs were given away for kids and seniors. A Blue Week, where a kit and a recipe was taken home from kids and seniors to bake a blueberry loaf, which all the supplies were provided from Dakota Bread. And a Brown Week, that all the kids and seniors were provided with a kit to grow your own mushrooms at home, provided by Adama Central Christian Detroit Farm. Upon completion of their homework each week, kids and the seniors received a $3 coin to purchase fresh produce at the farmer's market at the farm stand vendors. Seniors can also receive an extra $3 by completing a walking log each week. So that means the kid, the seniors were receiving $6 and the kids were receiving $3 every week. This program maxed out with sixty-five kids and sixty-nine seniors and the coins distributed added up to kids received $675 and seniors received $852. Along with this Power Produce Program, we also were offered to be a part of a pilot program with the Michigan Farmer's Market Association called Produce RX. And this is a web-based platform that allows registrations to take place online while tracking distributions administratively on our end. This program allows us to survey participants of the Power Produce Program and also promote other health-based initiative programs.
Very good. One of the other programs that we started this year was our blood pressure program that we have now deemed Pulse Patrol, okay? This has been a dream mine for quite a while and it was kind of a little difficult finding some qualified folks that could take the blood pressure and then monitor us as we're giving it back to them. So the whole point of this was, a year ago, Humana graciously gave us $5,000 worth of blood pressure equipment. So that entailed 100 digital blood pressure cuffs that can go home with participants. We also have a permanent blood pressure kiosk that we are going to install into the community center right now and then we'll move it for the Event Hub for a while and then we'll probably put it over at the Recreation Center after it's completed. In order to do this, we had to have people sign up. So we had fifty people sign up. The whole premise was they were to come to the market. Someone was going to take their blood pressure, wait for a little bit, and then that participant had to mimic back that they knew how to correctly take their blood pressure. And looking forward to that, I kept thinking, I don't have a nurse, I don't have a nurse. And one of our recreation commissioners, Carrie Ann Warren, goes, "My mom's a nurse, she'll do it." And so by, by that grace, I did get ahold of Maddie. Maddie came to see me and we were extremely fortunate to have them. Maddie took the first day herself and was in that tent for like almost four hours straight, taking blood pressures and having them. She goes, "Oh, my God, I need help." And I went, "Well, do you know anybody?" And she goes, "Do I know anybody? I belong to a sorority of nurses." And I was like, "Oh, thank you." One of the most impressive things that happened out of this, though, that it's extremely important for people to get a baseline. I don't care what age you are. We had a senior that religiously came to have her blood pressure taken. So they know it because they're, they're monitoring it and we're writing it down. On this particular day, Marion Corrigan happened to come in and took the blood pressure and Maddie went, "You know, I'll just go sit down for a little bit. Come back in about a half an hour." So Maddie did as instructed. She came back in a half an hour. Maddie goes, "You know, you might want to go call your doctor when you get home." Maddie again, I mean, Maddie, Marion followed direction, called her doctor. Doctor said, "You should probably have someone take you to the ER." And he goes, "No, cancel that, call EMS right now. I want you at Providence now." EMS came and took her and they found two aneurysms that day. So she was in the hospital for seven days. However, however, that would have never been found. However, that would have never been found if we didn't have this program and we didn't have the generosity of the volunteerism from our nurses over there. [applause] I would like to thank Lambda Chi Chapter of Chi 805 Sorority, Inc. for volunteering your services at the Oak Park Farmers Market. Thank you, Dr. Toni Grant, Paulette Donahue, RN, Cheryl Rory, RN, and Maddie M. Warren, RN. We are very, very grateful.
Following that up with gardening at the market. So we got a grant that we wrote with Michigan State University Extension and Gaida Haverne, and she, I can't remember her title, it's something with women and infant and children. And she found a grant that she helped us write, and that was awarded to us of $1,500, and that was to be for our gardening program. And so we used this money to purchase raised bed gardens and starter plants for growing fresh produce at the Farmers Market. So in the pictures, you can see that the kids got to plant a variety of lettuces, tomato plants, onions, just be able to be interactive at the Farmers Market. And then we watched these plants grow all summer long, and then as they were harvested, families got to take them home. And then with the leftover funds of the grant that we were awarded, we were able to purchase equipment to jumpstart the gardening program in 2025.
Wow. So looking ahead to 2025, we are looking to extend this season from mid-June through mid-October. We are looking to expand the gardening program. We are looking to reach out to culinary schools and restaurants to increase the number of live cooking demonstrations. We are actively seeking out partners for this Power Produce curriculum. We were selected to participate in the Michigan Farmers Market Association for Racial Equity Cohort. I will be starting that in November. And one more step, looking forward to 2026. The Farmers Market will be moved to its permanent home to include indoor and outdoor space to increase vendor capacity. Increase season from mid-May to mid-December. Cooking classes for youth, teens, families, and seniors. Provide kitchen rental opportunities for current and future vendors to prepare foods for sale at the market. And thank you.
Thank you. This is a state-of-the-art program. We are so proud of you for starting it and improving it all the time. Amazing. It's amazing how much you got done. We stole her from Lathert Village and we're not letting her go back. Just saying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a special recognition for Nurses of Lambda Chi Chapter of Chi 805 Sorority, Incorporated, who saved many lives, but saved one in an Oak Park Farmers Market one day this past summer. And I have a message. Mary Ann Corrigan couldn't be here. She's helping her sister who's had surgery, but she sent you a letter. I would like to thank the amazing people in Oak Park who provide the enormous number of services to the seniors of the city of Oak Park. Specifically, Ms. Merrily for being the coordinator of everything. And Ms. Maddie, who said to me after she saw my blood pressure was so high, "I would call your doctor when you got home." I did, and I was in the hospital for seven days to get things under control. I credit Ms. Maddie for helping to save my life. I am forever grateful. Mary Ann Corrigan. Nurses make a difference. And just an aside, the new president of Corwell Health is Lamont Yoder, RN. A nurse. We are presenting the sorority with this plaque, and I'll read it. And we're also presenting individual plaques to the four heroines who help save lives every day. This is Certificate of Recognition, Lambda Chi Chapter of Chi 805 Sorority, Incorporated, November 4th, 2024. This award is being presented in recognition of your dedicated and truly lifesaving service of blood pressure monitoring during the Oak Park Farmers Market. You have provided compassionate care and commitment to health through your volunteerism, which made a meaningful difference to those you serve. Your dedication to the health and well-being of our community, combined with your professionalism and expertise, has had a profound impact on our residents and helped save a life. With sincerest appreciation and gratitude, we thank you and honor your contributions and unwavering support. November 4th, 2024, Marion McClellan, Mayor of the City of Oak Park. Thank you.
Council members, I think we want to do some more photos, please. Please join us.
And the members of the sorority.
Absolutely.
Oak Park is where it's happening. Item eight, bids. Request to award the Professional Services Contract for Pre-Demolition of Hazardous Materials Survey Project, M778, to American Environmental Consultants, AEC, of Detroit, Michigan, for the total amount of $14,600. Can we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay. Ah, and our city engineer is here to explain.
Good evening. We have requested proposals from consultants to provide qualifications and pricing for pre-demolition hazards materials survey project, M778. The project was advertised, and 41 contractors viewed the documents. On October 10th, we opened nine sealed proposals, were received and opened. The lowest qualified proposal came from American Environmental Consultants, AEC, of Detroit, Michigan, and submitted a base bid proposal for $14,600 for the Hazmat Survey Project. This project will sample various building materials in the community center, ice arena, pool locker rooms, snack bar, pool restrooms, and cable building in advance of these buildings scheduled for demolition in 2025. The samples will be tested for the presence of hazardous materials such as asbestos, PCVs, and other contaminants. We checked their references, and they had a very positive responses. We recommend that you approve the award of the Professional Services Contract to AEC.
One question, this is required by the federal government, is that correct?
I believe it's governed under state law, but yes, it is above our pay grade.
Any questions or comments? No. Roll call vote then, please.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. We are now in the section run by City Manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I would like to ask our acting city clerk slash deputy city manager slash city manager of Berkeley, Crystal Van Vleck, to chair 9A1 for us, please.
Very long introduction. Good evening. I'm excited to come before you tonight to request the appointment of a new board member to Oak Park Youth Assistance. The Oakland County Youth Assistance Program is administered through the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division and consists of local youth assistance offices in Oakland County communities through tri-sponsorship agreements between the circuit court, the local municipalities, and the local school districts. Membership eligibility includes civic leaders, organizational and government persons, professional people, and individuals interested in serving youth in the area covered by the city of Oak Park and the Oak Park School District. After new members are approved by the Oak Park Youth Assistance Board, they must be presented to the local sponsors for approval. Upon acceptance by the local sponsors, they must then be sent to the Oakland County Circuit Court, judges for approval, and formal appointment to the board. Oak Park Youth Assistance has appointed Deanna Taylor to the board and is asking the local sponsors for approval. Deanna is a retired cosmetologist with a passion for giving back to the community. She owned and operated a nail salon and beauty spa for years. Throughout her career, she has held various leadership roles, including serving as the chairman for Detroit Head Start. She founded the Women Falling Forward Ministries and has been honored with prestigious awards such as the Spirit of Detroit Award and the Keys to the City of Dearborn. She has also dedicated much of her life to helping young mothers care for their children. Deanna has been volunteering with the Oak Park Youth Assistance for over a year now. She attends monthly board meetings. She volunteers for the Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast. She assisted in the creation and the planning of our recent Making It Look Good event and has already made a positive impact on the organization. So tonight, we are recommending that council approve the appointment of Deanna Taylor to the Oak Park Youth Assistance Board.
Okay, is there a motion?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion? She sounds like she's going to be wonderful. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Welcome to the board.
Okay, thanks, Crystal. And 9B1, I would like to ask City Engineer Kara Grissimer to join me at the podium to explain.
Good evening. Before you, we have pay application number two, or pay application number three and change order number two in the amounts of $565,246.87 and $42,334.84 respectively for the 2024 Sidewalk Replacement Project, M762, by Italia Construction of Washington Township. This project includes sidewalk replacement in the north end of the city, north of Lincoln, and this project is 100% complete.
We need a motion to approve this pay application and change order.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any questions? Yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
So how much was, I don't want to say over budget, but how much entry did you end up paying Italia for this project?
We did the, it's the $42,334.84 that was above the original budget. The reason for this is we had more approaches than we had anticipated, and we added 19 additional properties above the base bid that were outside of this neighborhood that we had gotten complaints about previously.
So the approaches, though, mightn't you say is that the residents paid for that approach, right?
Yes. We are expecting revenue just under $925,000 in funding back from the adjacent properties. The approaches were replaced on the city contract because it's in the right of way.
Madam Mayor, could I, just for clarification? So Kara, just for clarification for council, so the total contract amount, by the way, there was one other change order for just under $2,000 to add to that 43,000.
Yes.
But the total project is just shy of 1.3 million, of which 900 and how much is going to be?
$925,000 is going to be invoiced to people.
So in total, how much was the sidewalk replacement?
And that's with both of the change orders?
Yes.
And it says that the project's 100% finished?
Yes.
Do we need them to come back to fix anything? Because I know that there are some residents who still feel that the job is not quite finished.
Yes. In the spring, we will be compiling what we call a punch list in order to close out the project. And the contractor, if restoration didn't get fixed, if something cracks over the winter, we will have them, they are still on the hook to completely restore everybody's lawns, everybody's frontages to normal.
How are they on the hook?
We have $5,000 in retainage, as well as we have a bond with them, and we can go after their bonding company if they refuse to do what we ask them to do.
This is the last payment that we're making to them?
This is the second to last payment. The final payment will be release of the retainage of the $5,000, and that will probably be sometime next year.
So they're not going to be paid in full prior to us giving them that list?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner. Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kara. So 9C1, I'd like to ask Finance Director Sandra Crawford to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungay. Before you is a request to receive and approve the exception recommendations regarding the special assessment districts. At the council meeting of October 7th, City Council adopted the Special Assessment Resolution Number Nine to confirm the role with the exception of 26 which are attached, which were which were removed temporarily for further review. City council also adopted special assessment resolution number ten, setting the due date of November thirteenth, together with a penalty of ten percent for special assessment district number seven sixteen, delinquent utilities, special assessment district number seven seventeen, unpaid false alarms, special assessment district number seven eighteen, unpaid miscellaneous concrete replacement, and special assessment district number seven nineteen, unpaid property blight, and special assessment district number seven twenty, unpaid sidewalk replacement. The recommended action is that it is recommended that the unpaid invoices belonging to the following parcels and addresses be restored to the special assessment district number seven sixteen along with the original ten percent penalty. Twenty-three, five, one, one Norwood, twenty-three, eight, four, four Republic, twenty-three, four, sixty-one Sussex, twenty-one, eight hundred Kipling, thirteen, three, ten Woodvale, twenty-five, one, fifteen Coolidge, twenty-three thousand Eastwood, eighty-six, forty-six Kimberton, twenty-three, one, sixty-one Avon, twelve, seven, forty-five Northfield, twenty-two, one, seventy-one Kenosha, twenty-one, six, twenty West Hampton. And the following parcels be restored to the special assessment district number seven eighteen along with the original ten percent penalty. Twenty-four, zero, nine, zero Moritz. And the following parcels be restored to the special assessment district number seven nineteen along with the original ten percent penalty. Twenty-three, one, twenty-one Republic, twenty-two, one, twenty Clover lawn. And the following parcels be removed from the special assessment district number seven sixteen along with the original ten percent penalty. Fourteen, four, forty Rosemary, fifteen, two, oh, one Kenton, fourteen, three, oh, one Hart, twenty-three, two, ten Scotia, twenty-three, zero, eighty-one Rensselaer, twelve, nine, twenty Northfield, fourteen, zero, one, zero Cloverdale, twenty-two, one, twenty Clover Lawn, fifteen thousand Dartmouth, and twenty-three, four, thirty-five Marlowe.
Okay, we need a motion then?
Yes.
Request to receive and approve exception recommendations regarding special assessment districts.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions? Issues?
Let's do roll call.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes. Motion carry, thank you.
Thank you, Director Crawford. Deputy city manager Dave DeCosta, if you could join me at the podium for nine D one, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager Tungate. Before you tonight is a change order request for the eight-mile booster station rehabilitation project. At the February fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, the eight-mile booster station rehabilitation project M seven thirty-two was awarded to CSM Mechanical of Milford, Michigan for the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. This is only a partial award as we do not have the funding to complete the entire project. Since that time, we have budgeted additional funding to complete the remainder of the bid items. The items in change order number one include the removal and replacement of all the bolts within the facility as well as the painting and coating of the pump station. The total charge for change order number one is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. It is recommended that change order number one for the eight-mile booster station rehabilitation project M seven thirty-two to CSM Mechanical of Milford, Michigan, be approved in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. Funding is available in the water and sewer fund for this expenditure.
Is there a motion to approve change order number one? Thank you. Discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitehead. Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Thank you.
Motion carry, thank you.
Okay, nine D two. Director Maroni, if you could join me at the podium. This is a grant application for the Oakland County Access to Transit Program.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager Tungate. In front of you is a request to pass a resolution in support of a grant to apply for the 2024 Oakland County Access to Transit Program. What this will do is allow us to add wayfinding signage to help both the users of transit services find our community facilities as well as people at the community facilities finding public transit as well as our Mogo stations. So we are asking that city council support our application for this grant.
So first, let's get a motion in a second. And then, tell us a little bit about the wayfinding signage.
We don't have a whole lot of details yet. So we are applying for the grant minimum that's allowed of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to apply for this grant, and it will pay for the construction of the wayfinding signage. And we have not identified the locations yet or the design of it. That will be part of this process if we're awarded the grant.
Wonderful. Grant application. Do we need a roll call? Voice votes, fine. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
We are going to apply for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
One more thing I just wanted to add. So I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the people, both on our staff and our city clerk's office, our director of elections, Jolynn Williams, everybody who's been working so diligently on the election. I also want to say that we are doing everything we can to make sure that the city has a safe and productive day tomorrow. Please bear with us, it's going to be a very busy day tomorrow. But we are going to do our best to make sure that our residents have access to the polls and it's as safe as can possibly be. Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Call to the audience, we have cards, I believe.
Ms. Silva Haywood.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just have two questions that I'm concerned about. And one of the question is, what is the, what is the process, or should I say, what is the criteria of a person parking on the street have license plates on his vehicle, but it's never being moved? I mean, it stays in one spot from one week, a month till the next. So I just want to know, what is the, what is the right procedure for that?
Please come see us after the meeting. We will get you data.
Okay. Okay. And one more question I have. The street, the street called Rutland Drive, I think that's Southfield. And I travel that street quite, it's right there by Oakland Community College. The street is really, really bad. It's Rutland Drive. You can take Rutland Drive when you go into the freeway, to the large freeway. And I mean, it's, they have, they have some signs out there, you know, like you put those work signs for you to go around, because they got it right there in the center.
One minute, one minute left.
You go the other way, you know? So, so it really, someone need to really see about that because I'm telling you, if you're not a careful driver, it would tear up your vehicle in no time. So you nearly have to just come to a stop when you transporting on that street. So someone really need to do something about that.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for coming and sharing residents' concerns with us.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay, thanks.
We have another card from, I believe it's David on Kingston.
I don't particularly want to sound like a heel, but this last tax bill that we received that was due at the end of August was the largest increase in our taxes that I could recall. And I want to quote here from the recent newsletter that was sent out that it says, "In the spirit of prudence and transparency, I want to remind residents about these upcoming tax increases as they appear on your next bill." I have a couple of questions. Number one is that why wasn't this transparent message printed well before the millages were on the ballot so we could be aware of how much of our increases we were going to incur? I believe mine was in the neighborhood of three hundred dollars, and I've heard other people also complaining that they went up tremendously, their taxes. And number two, I would like to know why people who live in subsidized housing, like at the Federation Apartments, and who pay very little rent because of their subsidized housing, why are they allowed to vote on situations that don't affect them that increase our taxes one way or another? I would like to have those issues addressed because this is getting kind of ridiculous. And we're now having to pay for sidewalk repair, and from what I understand from this, we're in store for more tax increases as well. Those are my comments.
Thank you. And please come and see us at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Anyone else who didn't write a card? First, then we're at call to the council. I would like to extend condolences to the family of Sean Whitehead on the very unexpected passing of his beloved aunt. In the fall, I think Benny has some pictures for us of a couple of fall leaves. Maybe not. Uh-huh, wait a minute. There is an event, although we'll go the other way. This is, I want to thank the Assistance League of Southeast Michigan, which is based in Rochester. They got volunteers to come to Key Elementary. They set it up with hundreds, it looked like a department store. There were sections with boys' long-sleeve shirts and boys' sweatshirts, and girls' long-sleeve shirts and girls' sweatshirts, and beautiful new coats, boys and girls, and clean underwear, and socks, and hats, and matching gloves. And each child, well, the mother would sign up for all the sizes beforehand. The kids were really excited about their shopping day. And each one got their own personal shopper who took them around and found them the section in the coats that was their size and helped them try it on, make sure it was good, and write their name in it. This was not a Kmart deal, this was a Saks Fifth Avenue deal. This was so elegant, and the kids just had the most wonderful time. And they went home with a huge bag of free winter clothing. And so thanks again to the Assistant League of Southeast Michigan. This one last night, a lot of us were at the Yeshiva Beth Yehuda dinner. We listened to former Prime Minister Tony Blendo.
Boris Johnson.
Boris Johnson. Boris Johnson spoke last night, and it was an amazing unity event that had Catholics, Protestants, Jews, black, white, all different nationalities together, working together and praying together for peace in the world. It was a beautiful event. Benny, I don't think I sent you those two pictures of the trees then, huh? No, okay. Just to let you know about leaf collection in the city of Oak Park. People are wondering what it is. If you have a city calendar, this, oh, there they are, okay. If you have a city calendar, this chart is on the city calendar talking about when your section of the city is going to have its dates. Like my section is section one, and the last date will be November twenty-fifth. And so look this up, it's also online so you know when the last day to get your leaves out is going to be. Sorry. We also met Jamila Prince, who is the new principal of Key Elementary and is a delightful person. Julie Solomon Radnor, do you have council comments?
The only thing that I'd like to say is that up at the council table tonight, for the first time that I can recall, we have a very special guest, and that's Crystal. She decided to join us up here at the council table for the first time. I think she's getting ready for her new position in Berkeley or something, I don't know. Or maybe she likes it here so much now that she's going to stay, I'm not really sure. Get out and vote tomorrow. Have a good night.
Amen. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
I'm just going to echo that, please vote if you haven't. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Sean Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the condolences. I do want to encourage everybody to get out and vote. We did have a couple unexpected losses in my family. I lost an uncle, my Uncle Tate, and I lost my aunt over the past week, my Aunt Georgia Cox. My cousin who I grew up with, he's about a year older than me. He said one of the last things he did with his mom was he went to go vote. And so I just want everybody to know how important it is to do that. I did hear a scary message kind of from our clerk back in August. I think our turnout for August this year was lower than 2022 and 2020. So we just don't want to rest on our laurels. So those friends that you think may not have a voting plan, give them a call tonight. Make sure they got a ride and vote, because it's very, very important this time. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you so much. We will not gavel the meeting to a close because we are going into closed session. Pursuant to Section Eight of the Open Meetings Act to convene a closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication about pending litigation involving the city. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar. Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Daniel.
Motion carry, thank you. We will go in and come back.
I'm going to call you, I have your number.
Okay. Okay.[423.53]